This conference will now be recorded.
All right, I see Rebecca. And Roy Kenyon, are you hearing or seeing us?
I am hearing and seeing you.
All right, very good. All right. I think we have all of the... So it's time to start the meeting. You can hear my cuckoo clock. I'll wait. I couldn't mute, but then I couldn't do anything. Other meetings I mute and just let others talk, but that doesn't work tonight. All right. Before I call the meeting to order, Katie Jacobson, who is chair, had some issues come up that she needs to address. So she's excused tonight as vice chair. I'll run the meeting. And we have a... Pardon me? Okay, if you're not going to talk...
Unfortunately Doug, now you're muted.
Right, okay.
There you go.
Yeah, so I'll call a meeting to order. We have a quorum of commissioners, both Commissioner Claire and I are present. And I'll, if I may, take the liberty for the mayor and congratulate him on having his entire council present. So with that, I'm... Use the sound check really for purposes of introduction unless... Oh, Shannon, Shannon, you're also on the call to Shannon Bocare, the city manager of Yahaas. So welcome. Unless there's anyone that wishes to make any other introductory remarks, I think we all know we've been through these work sessions before. It's an opportunity really for the county and the city councils to meet once a year and talk about common issues. Certainly make sure we're aligned on the issues that are of most importance to both of us. And I think, again, it's an opportunity just to work together, which is in the best interest, I think, for all of us and for the county. So with that thought, we have an agenda. And I have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight issues. And I'll... Does the Yahaas City Council have access to the agenda?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, all the members of the council have it.
Okay, so I won't go through it. So the first one would be a COVID-19 update. And Rebecca Austin, who's our director of public health, is present. So Rebecca, give us an update and tell us where we're headed.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. So I'd like to frame my updates as the three Cs, the counts, the concerns, and the community. So to start out with the counts, we have 362 positive cases in our county. We have so far, sadly to say, seven deaths. And the state is at 13,081 positive tests, positive cases. And I think the changes that we're seeing happening across the state are that COVID is in a younger population now. If you remember when we first started out, it was the older population, over 60, 65, that being hardest hit. And now our, most of our cases are between 20 and 29-year-olds. And then I'd just like to mention the positivity rate because there's a lot of confusion about that. So people think that the more testing that we do, the more cases we're going to have. And so we like to look at the percentage of positive cases against total cases that we've had. And so in Lincoln County, we're a little over 6% right now. That's our rate. So that means 6% of all the tests that we've done are coming back positive. And just to give you a reference for that, statewide, it's about 4%. In Multnomah County, it's about 4%. And then among our regional leaders, Benton is at 1%, and Lynn is at 2%. And again, Lincoln County is a little above 6%. So that tells you a little something about how many people are transmitting this disease. So the higher the percentage rate, of course, the more there is transmission going on in your community. So we aren't as bad off as some of our colleagues, especially in eastern Oregon. For example, Mount Heward County, which is a very, very large county in the Barstow population, right on the border of Idaho, has 16% positivity rate. They are really, really suffering out there. So then I'm going to move on from the counts to the concerns that I have. And I apologize to my county colleagues who have heard me ranting about this for a couple of days now. I'm still on the same rant.
Well, I think the rant is... Excuse me Rebecca, this is Doug. I think the rant is important information, so it needs to be repeated probably more than once for all of us.
Yeah, I think the reason I apologize is because it's not really in my nature to rant. But you know, there's so much that we are all taking in and trying to cope with and to adjust to. The COVID itself is something that none of us have ever lived through before. A pandemic that has affected this country just to a state. So, and so when we have other struggles on top of that, it makes it particularly challenging. So my biggest concern today is that we really only had two mitigation methods available to us to try to control this disease, right? One of them was testing. So along with the testing, when you test people, you get positives. You contact, trace all of their contacts, who they might have infected, and then you isolate everybody for 14 days. That's a really smart way to try to control an outbreak. The other mitigation that we have is basically six-foot distancing, wearing your mask, and washing your hands. So those are the two things that we have in our toolbox that we can help control this outbreak. And really, one of them has now been taken away from us. So the whole testing thing that we have been working at for months now, to get testing up and running and useful enough that we could make an impact, has really gone in a very bad direction for us. And it's not, it's not just us in Lincoln County, it's really the whole country. So what is happening is because the testing is linked to really a national supply, the national companies that do the testing, and we really rely on the nation as a whole to help us out in this regard. And when there are...
Everybody mute.
Somebody needs to mute.
With the exception of Rebecca, who's speaking, we are getting some feedback echo there.
There we go, thank you. So what's happening is because we've got these severe hotspots in the southern part of our country, Florida in particular, but also Texas and Arizona, those states are taking all, all the resources are going to those states to help them. And so we are feeling that very much so. And we are having, we're struggling with a backlog in our testing. We have some tests that have been sitting in the Quest Lab, which is a national company, in the Quest Lab here locally for, we're now on our 12th day. And these aren't just like people who we think it would be a good idea to test them. These are our residents in our long-term care facilities. And this is why I'm nearly coming unglued, because this is a very high-risk population. And we cannot prevent outbreaks in our long-term care facilities when we don't know who is testing positive. So it's critical for our work to protect these people in these kind of get-care settings from transmitting the disease. So that is really, really challenging. So this backlog, I mean, you know, 14 days is the quarantine time. And we're looking at 12 days tomorrow will be 13 days. So that's a problem. I'm hearing from our partners at Samaritan that they're now getting very worried about the supply chain. So again, the supply chain is a national-run operation. And nothing has been done to try to shore that process up. So now, because all the resources are going to the southern part of the country, we cannot get testing kits, we can't get reagent. And this is really going to hamper our abilities to test people, let alone get the tests resulted. And then last is that the country has been making an effort to bring on more and more different platforms of tests. And, but the problem with that is that because a lot of these platforms are new, they're not all as reliable as the PCR, which is what we've been doing from the GETCO, which is the swab in the nasal-phenogenial area to get a sample, and then we test that. So we have quicker ways of testing, but they're not as reliable, so that we have to back it up with the PCR test. So that is really hindering our work. It's causing more work for people. And you know, we don't want to discourage that because we need those innovative platforms, but we also have to be patient with working all the bugs out of them. So that is a huge concern of mine. And then the other concern really is what we have left is the six-foot distancing, the wearing the face coverings or the masks, and washing our hands. And I think we're all very aware of that as our tools. And we certainly have been pushing that message out in our Keep Lincoln County Open posters and social media posts and everything that we're doing. You're going to start seeing them on the back of buses now. So we're doing as much as we can, but I think it sort of leads me to my last C, which is our community. And I do think, aside from the GETCO, it's going to take us all working together to try to beat this thing. But I think where we're at now, it's not so much the sprint, which I feel we've been on since the end of February, but we're now into the marathon. So we're not seeing any letting up of this. In fact, this is the season where we should see a lot of letting up, right? Because the coronavirus is very opportunistic, just like the flu. And it will come back roaring back in the colder weather, and especially when we're all inside, and it can spread so much easier inside than it can outside. So we have to settle into our new norm. We have to learn how to be creative and how to work together to really normalize... This is our life now, and I guess that's what we all really need to come to terms with. This is our life. And so wearing a mask, keeping six feet away from each other, and washing our hands should be just becoming automatic to many of us. And I think what we're going to have to do is, you know, get more creative, get innovative. I think that's what this country is built on. It's what we've always done. And we really need to empower ourselves to get more creative instead of wringing our hands. And trust me, I've been doing a lot of wringing my hands, still am. But I'm also trying to think a little bit outside the box and really listening to people that maybe not be quite in step with us on some things, because I think they are our innovators. So for example, I got a phone call the other day from somebody who was very displeased about what public health was doing. And I have not had a chance to talk to this person because he didn't leave me his name or his phone number. But I really listened to what he was saying and listened in between the lines of what he was saying and tried to stay very neutral and not be offended by what he was saying. Because I do think that's what's going to change how we all respond to this, is to really maintain openness, open hearts, open minds to what we can do in our communities to help. And I know that he was not meaning, he wasn't meaning any harm. He really was frustrated, like many of us are. But what came out of that is, I think, a pretty good idea, actually. And I want to pass it on to you because I feel like he wanted public health to do this. But I'm thinking, I don't have the staff to do this, but it's a pretty good idea, actually. And especially living in a tourist area, that he wanted me to go out and hand out masks to everybody on the streets, so people in public health could do that. And I'm thinking, well, that wouldn't be a real good use of our time, but it could be something that cities pick up and come up with some kind of kiosk or... What do you call, like a little booth where they had masks and maybe hand sanitizer that they could just give away. And I think, you know, instead of just thinking, oh, that's so hard to do, you know, or how do we get all that stuff? It would be great if somebody would pick that ball up and run with it, because I do think it could bring us all a little bit more peace of mind. And who knows how many people we could salvage from getting the coronavirus if we did something like that in our communities. So that's, that's basically what I wanted to say, is that our new normal is going to challenge us every day. But in order to survive, we must do that. So thank you very much, and I'm happy to take your questions.
Let me unmute. Let, I'll just go through the city councilors alphabetically. And if you have a question, you can answer it. That avoids everyone talking at the same time. So alphabetically, Max, save the mayor for last, Your Honor. Max, any questions? You're muted. You're muted, but I assume you have no questions?
Sorry, I couldn't get in for a little while, but I'm, I'm here. I don't have any questions at this time.
Okay. Next would be, let's see, I'm trying to do this alphabetically, so I guess that'd be Mary Ellen O'Shaughnessy. Again, Mary Ellen, you're muted. All right, well, we'll come back to Mary Ellen. Jim, I see you. Any questions?
No, I don't have any questions, but I really want to thank Rebecca. She's been very professional, and it's nice to have a professional opinion that you can respect. Thank you for all the work you've been doing, and I agree with you 100%.
All right, thank you, Jim. Leslie? Any questions, Leslie? I heard you earlier. All right, well, we'll move on to the mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, John. I appreciate that. No, I don't have any questions for Rebecca. I appreciate her update. It was very thorough.
All right, and I'm going to add a couple of comments, but I'm also going to recognize that we've already taken about 18 now, 19 minutes, and we've got about seven items left. But a couple of things that have come up. Number one, I have had several conversations where, as Rebecca pointed out, when you look at the percentage of positive tests, the immediate response from some people is, well, of course, we test more people. If you understand percentages, when you compare percentages of positive tests in one area to another area, you're equalizing the number of testing. So again, when our positive test rate is 6% compared to 2% for, what was it, Lane County or whomever, we're three times as bad, folks, and it's not because we're testing more people. So that's my first point. Second point, I've had some questions come up about, when's the county going to go to Phase 2 so all the businesses can open up, or more businesses can open up? And we are on the governor's watch list. We're one of eight counties. All eight are rural, which surprised me when I heard the list. And frankly, with the kind of information that Rebecca has shared and the fact that we're on the governor's watch list, I can't imagine that we would be approved if we applied to Phase 2. And I have to be honest, as a leader, I think it would be irresponsible to apply to go to Phase 2 when we're dealing with an increasing number of cases and really an issue as far as availability of testing equipment and access to results. So a little bit of information on the county and my feelings about Phase 2. And then finally, on Monday of this week, the Board of Commissioners voted to extend our 24-hour hold on rentals in the belief that anything that we could do that might help slow the spread under these conditions was a positive. I think it was said that, you know, if we, we may question the true effectiveness, but if there's no evidence that it's not at least helpful, and therefore, if we save one person and save one death, it's an effort to try to limit the spread of the virus. So the county on, in unincorporated areas, has the 24-hour hold in effect until August 18th, I believe. So with that, any, any other questions before we move on to Roy on Ocean View? And I'll just let people go. If you've got a question, speak up. All right. Rebecca, if you're trying to talk, your lips are moving, but I can't hear you.
I think she's on a different call.
Okay. Thank you, Wayne. For a while, I was afraid my audio went out. But all right, we will move on to Ocean View Drive. Roy's on the phone and, or on the call, virtually. So give us an update, Roy.
All right, let's start with the permit process. We all know that we're dealing with an area that has Mittens, that's in some places, you know, an important archaeological site. So we had to go through the process. We were scheduled to actually do digging early on in the year. And COVID got in the way. Basically, the archaeologists work through the University of Oregon. And with just a day or two before they were scheduled to show up, U of O canceled all outside work, and so they couldn't travel. We did eventually get them onsite. They did their work. They produced a report. I viewed the report. It was then sent to the local tribes for their review. It was then sent back. So we had a final, a final report that then I received. And then mid, end of June, I sent the report to SHPO, which is the State Historic Preservation Office, for their review. And I got email confirmation that they had received the report and that they would be viewing it, I guess, in a timely manner. It's now smack gab in the middle of July. I haven't heard anything yet. I'm hoping that, before the end of the month, that we get their, their review back. The report didn't have any significant findings in it. It's pretty clean. I think basically, we're going to go, we're going to get and get the go-ahead to do the guardrail work that we wanted to do. Now, I had a conversation with Shannon, I think it was like three weeks ago, regarding the guardrail. And she had asked about the possibility of, instead of a guardrail, doing some rock work similar to what you see along 101 near the Sea Lion Caves. I told her I'd look into that, and I did. I didn't really find anything. I talked to ODOT. They really couldn't get me any numbers on, on cost. They had, they'd done some repairs, but they hadn't really built it into wall. And so I guess right now, we're, I don't know, I guess I need to talk to Shannon again. But I don't know that the wall is a possible thing. I did tell her that if that was something that the city of Yahaas wanted to pursue, that I would be more than willing to throw in the value of the guardrail, that we, you know, what we would be spending on guardrail, yet turn that over to the city, and they could put that towards, you know, whatever structure they wanted there. But we haven't really talked anymore about that. It was kind of more of a, an idea that was thrown out. I did some research, didn't really come up with anything. The county is going to be doing their road striping next month, August. It would be great if by then, we had a final on the direction of travel on Ocean View. I would really love to be able to stripe it, get that part of it done. We have, we still have time. I'm not trying to say that I'm pressed for time, but sometime in the next two or three weeks, it would be, it would be nice to know that we can go ahead and, and stripe it, and that would be the, the permanent striping. Other than that, that's kind of about it.
Questions for Roy? And I'll go through the list quickly. Max, any questions? Okay, I'll take that as a no. How about Mary Ellen? Mary Ellen, will you get your back? Still not hearing Mary Ellen. There you are. All right. We'll move on. Jim?
Uh, no, I haven't any questions.
Leslie? Still not hearing... How about the mayor?
Yeah, I'm, I'm here, Doug. It's unfortunate we couldn't... It's unfortunate we couldn't get the input from several of our councilors. But originally, we were hoping to get our transportation safety plan info and recommendations about the permanent direction. So we do have another council meeting on the 5th. I'll chat with city manager about whether or not we should discuss this and make a decision. But I'm not optimistic that we can have a final decision on striping by August 5th. But we'll see.
And that's fine. I said it would be nice. I didn't say that it was absolutely necessary. I understand what, you know, what's happening. It's worked, or it seems to have worked so far up to this point. I don't see there being a huge issue. It was just, you know, if, if you need more time, that's great. But most likely, then it won't happen until about this time next year. And if you're fine with that, I'm fine with that.
Okay, thank you, Roy.
And I guess I would encourage any of the councilors that, with the technical challenges that we're all having, if you have some questions, feel free to reach out to Roy. I know he'd be happy to answer emails or talk to people on the phone. And appreciate your patience as we, we move forward. So unless there's anything else, Roy, I'm going to jump down in the agenda, skip over Commissioner Hall for just a moment, and move on to the county health, mobile health facility. And Rebecca, I hope you hear me and can address that item on the agenda. And then I believe that would enable you to be excused for the evening.
Thank you, Commissioner. So yes, I am now here in the stead of my colleague Rebecca McPhee-Wilson, who runs our community health center. And so just reporting now what she has told me is that, of course, that was our plan pre-COVID. And it's probably been a couple of years now since we've been looking... pre-COVID. And it's probably been a couple of years now since we've been looking into some kind of mobile health clinic down in the Yahaas area. But we are sort of in COVID land now. All grants coming our way are very much tied to testing at our FQHC and telemedicine. So we're not really seeing anything that could help us get a mobile clinic going. Probably isn't the best time to get that in place, but it's definitely part of our strategic plan, which is a five-year plan. So we are, we will continue to look for grant funding, which would really be the only way that we could operationalize something like this. So, and I think Rebecca was curious if, how you all are feeling about us continuing to pursue this for the Yahaas community.
I'll let the councilors go. At your own initiative, if you have questions, thoughts?
This is Councilman Jim Took. I don't have any, a lot of questions. I understand the limitations and the constraints that everybody is facing at this point in time. I think it's something probably a future council would like to pursue. But I understand Rebecca's point of view, and it's going to be difficult at this time to move forward on this. So I think it's something we just want to keep in the background and take advantage of it, or take advantage of any opportunity in the future.
Great, thank you.
And this is Mayor Moore, just way in. I can't speak for the rest of the council, but I I would think, you know, if grant funding is available, purchase a mobile unit that could be used not only here in Yahaas, but maybe some other cities like Celeste or wherever it could be used, that would be a good thing to pursue.
Right. Thank you. I agree.
And I remember, go ahead, Rebecca.
No, that's all right. I'm done.
I was just gonna say, I remember, well, I guess it's close to two years now. When I was on the campaign trail, this question came up when I was in Yahaas, and I continue to be a supporter. I have had a conversation with Dr. Ogden at the hospital. And she was actually enthusiastic about the possibility of trying to do something on a joint basis that, as I believe the mayor already pointed out, could serve not only Yahaas, but other areas of the county that don't have more direct access to healthcare. So something that I think is a good project, something we want to continue to support. And it may take a little patience under the COVID environment, but still something that we'd like to see done. So any other thoughts or questions on that? Not a forgotten objective. All right, Rebecca, you're excused. I will say that I have found one advantage of these virtual meetings. You can have dinner and get up and walk to your meeting in a matter of a minute, or you can do it the other way. So enjoy your evening, and thank you for being here.
Thank you, Commissioner, and thanks to all the council members. I appreciate it. Bye-bye.
Bye now. All right, we'll go back up and pick up the county housing initiative and Commissioner Hall. You can tell us about the honor you've received. And you're on mute if you're talking. Or are you having techno, technical problems? You indicated I don't, I don't see Commissioner Hall on the list of people that are present. Some callers aren't identified, but Wayne, do you have any idea?
I'm not sure. I know Claire was on here. She was early, and I didn't actually look at what number she was on the list here. So, and she hasn't texted me or tried to call me on my cell phone. So I'm not sure what's going on there. Maybe I can provide an interim.
Eric, okay, Claire.
Oh, have you got me now?
Yeah. But we got an echo.
Okay. Yeah, I don't know where that came from.
Looks like Max, can you, can you mute your phone, Max?
Everybody but Claire, mute your phone.
Everyone else is muted. She's gone now. She was caller four.
How about in the interim, if you'd like, I can give a little
Go ahead, Wayne.
Just on a couple of things with the, what we're doing on housing. Actually, one of the things that we could talk about is the county is proceeding. We're actually in the process of putting together an application right now for the low-income housing rehabilitation grant that Business Oregon provides through the Community Development Block Grant Program. And this is something that we identified in the Lincoln County Housing Strategy, which was adopted by all the communities and the county to move forward. And this is what we want to do is really provide some additional funding to a program that's already underway. We're using Dev Northwest. And you guys are familiar with Dev Northwest, your community lending works. I know you guys have a program. We actually have a joint program too, that's starting today in terms of business grants related to the COVID response. But they have an arm that also does housing, and that's Dev Northwest. And they are already doing some work in Lincoln County with money we'd put out previously. And we're starting, again, the process of continuing to feed that particular program. So we'll be applying for somewhere in the neighborhood of about $400,000. When the county applies, we'll make it available countywide all across the county. It doesn't matter what jurisdiction you're in. And then the plan is that in future years, we'll get other entities, especially City of Lincoln City, City of Newport, and City of Toledo, who have some capacity to actually apply for those grants on an annual basis, so we can keep funneling money into this program. It was very effective in the past. And we'd like to see that continue on because it keeps people in their homes. You know, one of the things we, we sometimes forget in, in discussion about housing, it's not just creating new housing opportunities, but keeping the existing ones up and operating. So that's a, a concrete step that we're taking and will be hopefully getting word on that pretty shortly.
All right, any questions of Wayne? And as you all see on the agenda, Commissioner Hall was appointed to the Oregon Housing Stability Council, and so we'll have a voice at that level within the state.
I would just have one comment. It's just more of a suggestion than a question. I've often wondered if government could cooperate with NGOs, say, for example, Habitat for Humanity. Habitat for Humanity basically builds new structures. It would seem to be nice if we could get some kind of a system where you could actually go in and rehab existing housing that's substandard to assist people that, you know, not to have a whole new house built, but to help them rehab the home they're in. Just a thought. I don't know if anybody else ever thought about that, and maybe that's not possible. But it's always been kind of curious for me if that was something that we could partner with and maybe move forward for some of these issues.
I certainly think that's a good idea and something that I'll mention to Commissioner Hall when we next talk or meet virtually. Max, did you have a question? I see you leaning forward. Yeah.
I'm wondering, CSC used to have rehab housing. And as I understand, there was, there was money left over in that. And the COG, Cascade, municipal governments has been in conversation with CSC. And I'm wondering if we're tapping into any of those conversations. I assume we will be, since I nominated Commissioner Hall to be Vice President of the COG Group.
And actually, Counselor Glenn, that's a good question, because that, that is the seed money that Dev Northwest has right now. Was that original money that was at CSC, which they managed on behalf of, actually Newport, Lincoln City, Walport, Toledo, and Lincoln County had all received some funds. The monies that we got back went into a revolving loan fund, and that was kind of sitting there at CSC. That was the problem. That is the money that actually is the seed for Dev Northwest for the program they've got underway. And we're now just adding more to it. So we're actually building on that existing program. But that was a great question.
Good, thank you.
Good question, for sure.
One other comment. I noticed that the AmeriCorps thing on Blodgett Road, the AmeriCorps program has a lot of building trades, training that they do. And that might be something, you know, we might have some kind of way that you could partner with them to help with rehab situations. But I have no idea what their restrictions are.
Well, certainly Commissioner Hall is in a position to, I guess, discuss those issues and see see what additional things might, might be done. Some good ideas. So, any other thoughts or comments? We'll make sure that Commissioner Hall knows we talked about her a lot while she wasn't on the, on the call. All right. Next on the agenda would be vacation rentals and county policies. Wayne, do you want to start out? Or do any of the councilors have specific items they'd like to mention first?
Well, the only thing, this is Mayor Moore, the only thing I would mention before Wayne starts out is that our council meeting from 2:00 to 5:00 today, yeah, we had lots of time to relax in between meetings. At our council meeting today, the Yahaas City Council did drop the 24-hour hold in Yahaas and moved that to a one-hour hold, effective immediately. Just wanted to update you on that.
Okay, thank you. You know, before Wayne says anything, I want to go back and I want to thank the city council and the mayor of Yahaas. Your willingness to put money available in support of businesses during these challenging times is appreciated, and it's recognized. So I just wanted to say thank you. I just got a text from Claire. I've been on the line. I was unmuted, but apparently it couldn't be heard. So again, we talked about you a lot, Claire, if you can hear us. And I'm sure you'll be following up and be available if people have other thoughts to share. So, thank you. Wayne, anything from our side?
Sure. Maybe just a quick update. You know, we've all been discussing short-term rentals and actually all lodging in the context of COVID-19. And I appreciate the update from the city, because the board had actually had that same discussion on Monday's meeting and actually voted to continue the 24-hour hold. So they're going to continue that until August 18th. And, and that, they articulated a number of reasons for doing that. And even though that makes a different set of standards throughout the county, I think some of the communities have gone to a three-hour hold, some have nothing, and you have a one-hour hold. At this point, they feel that, that it's still is part of the overall response that the county needs to be made to stop the virus. So that was the position the board took. In terms of just vacation rentals as a whole, you may recall that the county was examining its own short-term rental licensing program. And one of the key actions we took just pre-COVID was to actually suspend the issuance of new licenses. And we took a period of time in which we were going to look at some potential changes to our code provisions, develop some additional resources, including some new software to track data and information related to short-term rentals, get additional code enforcement resources onboard and move forward. And then, of course, COVID hit. And what we did there is, at this point, the board was going to, in sometime in early May, was going to actually reexamine the suspension of new licenses and decide whether or not to possibly move forward with a cap or take some other action. And what the board ended up doing was instead was to extend the the short-term rental license suspension through September 30th. And so we're continuing to work on the code provisions here. Obviously, it's taken a backseat to some other more pressing matters. But we'll be coming back and looking at, I think, a variety of things before September. If you haven't heard, there likely will be an initiative measure that is underway and maybe circulating in the county concerning short-term rentals. Some folks, I think, have been looking at this situation, looking at some of the responses that have been made in the COVID era here, and thinking that they want to do things a little bit differently here. And so stay tuned for that. We'll probably have more information on that initiative measure in the next couple of weeks in terms of where that is and where that might be going. And when it might actually, if they get the requisite number of signatures, get on a ballot. So we continue to look at other ways to improve our code provisions. And we'll be coming back to the board sometime before the end of September with those particular recommendations. And the board will take up again the question of whether or not to continue a suspension on new license applications or put in place some kind of cap.
Max, I saw you raise your hand. Go ahead. You're first alphabetically, too.
Okay, just an observation and maybe a suggestion. This is an area where I think it would be helpful to have some unified policies. I've begun to see advertising, particularly before the COVID, go with us because we, we don't have to follow the rules that Yahaas has. And which was implying that they would, were in the county. And so I'm, I'm thinking that, and suggesting that you, you might take a hard look at the policies that Yahaas has in place. We spend an awful lot of time on refining these policies. They're not perfect in any means, but it would be helpful, I think, so we don't get one being played off against another in this industry.
And Counselor Glenn, I appreciate that. And we actually have looked at the other ones. Unfortunately, in Lincoln County, we have a number of jurisdictions, and everybody has totally different schemes and totally different regulations. So, you know, Lincoln City does it one way, Newport does it another way, Yahaas does it a third way. So it's very difficult for the county in that sense to try and match everything that's out there. So but I appreciate it. We do, we actually look and share. And it's something I know that with city managers, with with Shannon Bocare and the city managers in, in Lincoln City, Newport especially, who have these things, we talk about this in short-term rentals and issues with that all the time. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yep, sure.
I would also say that I think there's an effort, certainly on my part, and I've seen it reflected in the actions of other commissioners to where it's practical or feasible, to try to, to try to have some commonality or alignment when, when it makes sense. So point well taken. Any other questions? Jim, go ahead.
That I keep trying to emphasize, and I talk to people and when I speak at the council and stuff. This is all tough. This is all hard. All these things are hard, especially right now. But I try to tell people and make them understand, well, you can't make them understand anything, but I try to tell people, here's the deal. If we do not get this under control by a combination of government action, community action, and overall cooperation, at some point, everything's going to get shut down again. If you look at things like Miami-Dade County, now this is in Florida, where they fought every possible constriction that was being thrown their way, the mayor shut down all short-term rentals in Miami-Dade County. Can you imagine what that would be like? I mean, of course, we're not there. We're not that big. But again, if we don't get it under control, it's going to come back and bite us. And I just tell the people, you know, we're going to give you a little leeway. We trust you to do the right thing. But we'll see what happens.
I would agree with those sentiments. Any other comments? I don't know if, Mary Ellen, have you got audio back? Got any questions? I'll keep trying. Leslie? All right, the mayor.
No, I concur with the, the comments previously echoed. And I, Wayne, I hear your pain. You know, when we started this whole thing several months ago, when we got into COVID, at that first meet, joint meeting, meet, joint meeting, uh, we had pretty solid agreement between almost all of our cities and Lincoln County. And we've all kind of gone our separate directions. So it's, it's tough for the county to end up with a position that's going to work with all cities. But that's all I got.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Let's move on to the, uh, question about the financial outlook and, uh, impact on Yahaats. Um, I guess as a former banker, I'll say, uh, things are tough, uh, but Wayne, um, I know you have some, uh, information.
Well, a couple of things, um, related to that. So of course we've completed our budget process, uh, and you know, we, we have impacts from COVID. Uh, but we also have some impacts, you know, structural kinds of things that we're looking at as we look to the future. Um, and, um, one of the things that we're monitoring very closely right now, uh, and, and it's sort of, uh, alliance of what you're saying, what's the impact on Yahaats from the county budget? Well, we're looking at what's the impact on Lincoln County from the state budget. And that's a big issue right now. Uh, the legislature, um, is, is going to have another special session here, uh, and to deal with just specifically budgetary issues. And unfortunately, because of the projections they've got from their revenue forecasts, um, they, uh, had talked about some cross-the-board cuts at a certain percentage level. But that was months ago. And by the time they actually get around to doing it, it's, it's going to concentrate it now to prob- probably a year's impact. Uh, that they're going to have to make their, uh, appropriate cuts. And so we're going to see some, um, changes. We're going to see some, uh, impacts on our budget, the portions of our budget, which are funded by the state, and that'll pass down in the services we can provide for citizens around the county, including those in Yahaats. Um, I will say this, that the one interesting aspect of this, and I know you guys, um, are participants with the League of Oregon Cities, is some of the CARES Act funding. Um, and I, I think there was a question that, that Shannon had sent our direction about whether or not you need to have an emergency declaration, um, in order to qualify for getting some reimbursement for some of those funds. Um, I, I, I can't give you that, that legal advice. I would really recommend you talk to your attorney specifically, but I can tell you this, the Board of Commissioners has extended its emergency declaration. We're coinciding with the, uh, State of Oregon, uh, and we will continue that. And, uh, th- this may be, um, uh, something that it's a abundance of caution, but we're likely going to be in this, uh, for a, a long period of time. And we're going to try and keep that declaration uh, active, even though we understand and any, any kind of emergency, you have the response. Uh, but then you have recovery and rebuilding. And those we do know under the CARES Act, at least the guidance that we've gotten from the Treasury Department, uh, those qualifying expenditures, uh, for those activities, recover and rebuilding, um, do qualify as long as they're spent within, um, the timeframe which runs to the end of December. So, um, that's probably important to you as you look at your response and any expenses that, that you've incurred that you might want to, uh, get reimbursed. But otherwise, um, of course, uh, a big impact on us, um, and it's at, at this point unknown is, um, our transient room taxes. Although it, ours is significantly less than I know the City of Yahaats, um, Lincoln City and Newport. It's a smaller percentage of our overall budget, um, than it is for your community. So, uh, but we're all going to monitor that. We're going to look at that. We do know that on a federal level, um, the current, um, uh, iteration of, uh, federal, uh, aid, which is going to be forthcoming, we think, within the next month, includes at least consideration under the House passed version of the HEROES Act, includes consideration of replacing lost revenue to local governments and state governments. I, I wish I could predict and say that's something that's going to be included in the final version. Uh, I'm not so sure it is. Um, I think that's a point of contention, uh, in Washington, and so we'll see where that goes. But that might be something that at least gets us over the, the, uh, initial, um, bump of what we're doing financially. Um, but we, we continue to, uh, work very carefully at being, um, fiscally conservative. The, the leadership, the board is, um, has exhibited over the last few years have really put us in a pretty good position to, to try and weather this as we go forward. We're not going to obviously see any growth uh, and, and activities or services out there, but, um, we're monitoring the situation very carefully. We've instituted some additional, um, check-ins that we're doing on a more regular basis and early on in the fiscal year to see where things are going and how they progress. Um, and from there, we'll just move forward.
Thank you, Wayne. Um, questions from counselors or mayor?
None for me.
Okay, um, I, I, thinking about the, the, the changes that, uh, we've implemented, if you will, within the county. And as, uh, Wayne indicated, uh, previously we used to look at budget adjustments, uh, semi-annually. We're now looking at budget adjustments, uh, quarterly, and we've tightened up some of the, um, uh, fund, uh, appropriations, recognizing, you know, one in particular that, uh, no position, if you, uh, have a resignation or a vacancy created, no, no position or very rare is the position filled exactly on the day that the person, uh, leaves. So that creates, um, um, if you will, uh, flexibility in a budget that, uh, really, uh, we've tightened up on and we've, I believe, budgeted about, uh, seven and a half percent reduction in most of the personnel services to reflect the fact that when vacancies occur, people aren't hired immediately to replace those people. So that kind of tightens up the budget and forces people to be a little, uh, little, um, sharper with their pencils when it comes to, uh, budgets and salaries. So that's an example. Um, any other questions? We've got, uh, two items in about two minutes, but, um, we can, uh, take a little extra time. Uh, but any questions on, um, financials? All right. Next would be, uh, planning department policy on certificate of occupancy. I don't know if that's a particular question from counselors or, um, if Wayne, you have some, uh, information.
I'm not actually sure either if it's, I, I, I know that there is a specific issue that we've got, um, that we've been dealing with, with, um, with the city and, um, some permits out there. And I would prefer not to discuss a specific, uh, uh, issue because we've been having some discussions with the city attorney uh, around what next steps might be. And so that's not something I'm really comfortable with discussing the particulars of that. If there's some general questions, I'd be happy to answer those if I can. Or maybe Shannon has something.
If I can.
Help us, Shannon.
If I can try to paraphrase Counselor Voller's, um, what I remember Counselor Voller's concern about this, and she hasn't been able to unmute herself, is there was just a general question about how does the county planning department, uh, file certificate of occupancies? How far back is certificate of occupancies? We found some other, um, generally older buildings, uh, when we've asked for them, they may not be on file. And so what is just the general expectation of the county in filing and how far back certificate of occupancies go? And I hope I'm paraphrasing that correctly.
And I appreciate that. I don't have the answer, uh, in terms of what the records are and how they're kept. Um, and this is, this has been a little bit of an issue with some of the jurisdictions in which we're providing the service, but you know, a certificate of occupancy, uh, not only means compliance with the building regulations, but also planning regulations. And when we're not doing both elements of it, sometimes I'm not sure where all the paperwork goes for all that. But I'd be happy to find, uh, uh, ask that specific question and see if I can get you back some, uh, additional answers on that particular issue.
And, and we'll make sure, I know, uh, planning director is involved too.
Great. Wonderful. Thank you.
All right. That brings us to the last item, and I think a similar situation, uh, we're not sure what the, the question is about, uh, the Riggs property. Uh, I do see the agenda mentions lawsuits, so I'm always, uh, cautious about what we talk about with a potential of a lawsuit. Um, so I don't know if there's, uh, some general questions or, um, Wayne, uh, if you, I don't believe you have much, uh, insight. Maybe the mayor or Shannon?
Uh, again, a, a citizen came to us, if I remember correctly, um, in was concerned that the property had been reclassified. And there has been some discussion after that, when it was brought up of whether it has or has not. And so my guess is if this could, if I could work with Wayne and we could research this issue and maybe come back to it and advise the commission and the council of what we have found about whether or not it has. Oh, and there's your cuckoo clock.
I was going to say, I can't mute my phone to cancel the cuckoo because then you won't hear me. So I guess that's not a, a very subtle, it's not subtle reminder that, uh, it is seven o'clock.
It's not so.
Yeah, um, just to finish that thought though, I, I, uh, I know Wayne, I'll happy to work with you Shannon and, um, get, uh, get some answers. So both, both those last two items are, uh, good questions and, uh, we'll work to get them clarified. So with that, um, go. Somebody have something to say?
I think I want to borrow your cuckoo clock for our own council meetings, if that's okay.
Well, I'll tell you, that's, that cuckoo clock has a special part and, uh, place in my heart. Uh, my wife and I took a trip to Germany and bought it in Triberg, which is the cuckoo clock capital of Germany. And, uh, had it shipped home and it's, uh, been on the wall for several years and, uh, part of our lives. Anyhow, uh, any, um, yeah, Max, you have your hand up. Go ahead.
I just wanted to say thank you for, uh, the work that you all provide and the funds you provide for the social service grants. We just completed this last week. And I, I enjoy being on that committee and there's a lot of work put into that. But I think we're one of the few counties that, uh, uh, make funds available to nonprofits. So I think we can be proud that over $3 million has gone in to nonprofits from the county over the course of a number of years.
And thank you, Max, for your service on that, uh, committee. And, um, you are right. When I tell other commissioners from other counties about the, uh, uh, program, the first question they ask is where do you get the money from? And I tell them it's general funds and they go, oh, oh. So, um, thank you for your service and, um, it, uh, I think, uh, I agree has been a good program. Other, uh, thoughts, um?
No, the, the only thing I would add, Commissioner Hunt, is that, uh, I would echo, uh, Shannon's comment earlier. I might like to borrow that cuckoo clock once in a while.
Well, you'll have a hard time getting it out of our house. We'll leave it at that. Um, and let me, um, offer my, uh, I guess apologies to Leslie and Mary Ellen. I'm sorry, uh, for whatever technical problems you weren't able to participate, but feel free to email me or, uh, email Wayne if you have questions that, uh, you didn't get a chance to, uh, raise tonight. And, uh, we'll certainly, uh, get answers back to you. And, um, I, uh, I really thank everyone. Again, a hundred percent attendance from your city council is, uh, outstanding and, um, much appreciated. Unless anybody has some last words, uh, it is now 7:03. The cuckoo clock has sounded and, um, I will adjourn the meeting. All right. Thank you all and, uh, have a good evening. Bye-bye.